Hello, Martina, I'm the Council of Community Housing Organizations. First of all, I want to thank GMDC for hosting us in this great place. Thank you for having me here. A couple of quick logistics items. The bathrooms are located outside in the lobby upstairs on either side of the stairs. This is a, we're trying to maintain this as a safe space. This is a non-profit owned space. If folks have brought political material that they want folks to take home with them, there is a large room right here to the right where you can bring your stuff and share it with folks, and we're going to have to clean that out at the end of the day. This is a town hall, so we're asking folks to write their questions on index cards like this. And if you come up with a question during the course of the conversation, please raise your hand with your card. One of our volunteers who have name tags with red stripes on them will come and pick them up. We will try to get through as many of the questions as possible. We'll try to make sure that we hit most of the topics that are, that people have brought up. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel.
Does this work? Oh, hey. Hi, everybody. I'm Rachel Brindisi. I teach over at University of San Francisco. And I was asked to first add one thing, which is with the cards, pass the cards in this general direction, I think to the, to the end of the rows, towards the front of the rows. So ask your questions on your cards passing this way. You have a question about the cards?
I do. Where are they?
Oh, they're over at this table right by the entrance door, and Caitlin is waiting some right now. So there are a couple of volunteers. One of my jobs is to thank the volunteers. So you see people around the room with these little stripes, name tags, and there are many of them, some of them are outside. And this event, we could have without them, but without a man doing the kind of lead organizing to make it happen. So thanks so much to her, especially. And I also want to, I thank the sponsors. I'm one of them, so I'm thanking myself, I guess, with the Grayson Program and Urban and Public Affairs at USF is one of the sponsors of this event. We have some information on the table in the back if you want to know more about what we do. And Chuchu, the Council of Community Housing Organizations, also has a sign up sheet in the back if you want to get on their newsletter. That's one of our co-sponsors. And then the Nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California is the other co-sponsor. And so this is a nonpartisan educational event put together by our three organizations. We're really happy to see all of you here. Let's see if I have any other for anything else I need to say. Basically, just that I also want to thank the candidates and welcome them. And welcome our moderator, Erica Aguilah from KQBD, who is willing to take it from here. Thanks.
Hi. Hello, Erica. Thank you for coming and you for spending an afternoon of weekend on St. Patrick's Day to learn more about housing in your city. Such an important topic. I cover housing for KQBD. Most recently, I've been tasked with producing a new daily podcast at KQBD called "The Bay", which takes me a lot away from my prior job as a housing reporter. However, I now push a lot of these housing issues onto "The Bay" and podcasts there because it is such an important topic for the Bay area and even for California as well. So thank you so much for being here and spending time. Thank you also for participating as a voter, wanting to be informed and engaged, wanting to make this city better. This is how communities are started and this is how we live. So thank you so much for being a voter and being here to be ready to be on board and ask questions. I want to also say that this video, this is meant to be video recorded, so just to make sure, if you are interested in asking a question, you are likely going to be video recorded and your voice will also be recorded. If you're interested in asking a question, again, the card's over here on the table. Do us a favor, pass them out to the edge so the volunteers can pick them up and we can continue to have a conversation with our candidates. Let's see, what other housekeeping things that I want to tell you? Yes?
Oh, and I just wanted to remind you I'll put your name on the back of the card.
Oh.
It was like asking.
No, it'd be great. Okay. So a reminder, just to put your name on the back of the card. So the way that will work is I will walk up to you, we'll bring them in, we'll get as many questions as we can. I'll read your name, ask you to stand up, walk over to you, have yourself introduce yourself to the community. This is, again, a safe space where we want to have open dialogue and safe conversation. And we'll have you read your question and candidate to answer that. This is an opportunity for our candidates who are running for San Francisco mayor to, to tell us more about where they stand on housing and what are their goals if elected mayor for housing. So remind, reminders, to keep the questions to questions. Also note that this isn't, let's see, oh darn, I'll just say it. No booing, no aggressive name calling, no shouting, no screaming. We're all civil, right? We all want to come here to learn and to be informed. So let's just be mindful. Let's see. I also want to tell you about the format. Not only to let our candidates know how we're going to do this, but also let you guys know, again, this is an engaging type of event, so we want you to be involved. So we're calling it the Town Hall Style. All we want to get the candidates to interact and be engaged with you guys. Y'all will share a microphone over here. We'll get started in a bit. I also want to let you know that we'll start with just, I'll introduce the candidates and give you just a very basic file of each candidate's name. We'll start with some, three questions that I've prepared. You guys have about two minutes to answer them. I'll interact over here. We'll try to keep this, not just on time as we can. After that, we also asked, and I don't know if you guys noticed, we also asked for your questions during social media as we were getting this event going. And we had a couple of them. You know the ones, so I've dropped them down. I'll call your names out if you are here today. Stand up and I'll bring you the question that we got prior to this event and have you pick off the segment where we talk and get questions from the audience. And then after that, each of the candidates will have an opportunity to do a closing statement for about ten minutes. Can you guys tell us your wrap ups and your thoughts? Did that sound good, y'all?
Erica? Do you have any indication of how long we're going to be?
What do you know?
No, when they speak.
Oh, yes. I will, sorry, the question was, I don't know if you have any indication of how far we are into our time. I will give you guys, no, I will direct.
What is that?
Yes. All right. So we're here for this, this is a special election on June 25th. The special election was necessary after former Mayor Eddie, unexpectedly died in December, and this really did speed up the dark campaign season. His term was not set to end until 2020, so the winner of the special election will fill out the rest of that term. There are eight candidates in a file to run. Right now, we have four candidates with us. I will introduce each one. We'll start in that level order with Angela Albiado. She is a civil rights attorney, served on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors for eight years from 1989 to 1987. You were also the board president during a portion of that time. She was born in San Francisco and attended college in the Bay Area. Angela, will you clean here?
Thank you.
We also have Jane Hinn. Jane Hinn is currently a member of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. She represents District 6. She was first elected to the board in 2010. Her current term ends in 2019. Prior to her election, Hinn was an organizer at Chinatown Community Development Center and a civil rights attorney. She was born in New York City and attended college in the Bay Area. Thank you, Jane, for coming. Next, we have Mark Laddo. Mark Laddo is a local business owner. He served on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors from 1998 to 2002. He was then elected to the State Assembly in 2002. Then he was elected to the State Senate in 2008 until 2016, he was representing the 11th district, which included San Francisco. He was born in Milwaukee, attended college in Colorado. Thank you, Mark. We also have Amy Arrow Weiss. She is the director of the St. Francis Homeless Challenge. That trust has been concerned with people's lives. Prior to that, Weiss has held numerous jobs in the community organizing, training, consulting areas. She was born in Berkeley and attended college in the Bay Area. Thank you, Amy. All right. So we'll get started soon. I just want to make sure y'all can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. It's still responding, maybe paging. Oh, this is fine. All right. So we're going to start with a couple of questions. And we'll start with the first order, for the most part, with acrobatic, so Angela, I'll start with you. I can both pass on down. You're like, oh, this is, that's, that's out, but now, so many school reports. Well, being Aguilah and the last name, I totally get that feeling. It always happens to go first, which I never studied. Thank you. It makes me weird. All right. So we're going to talk about housing right now, obviously, but housing buckets, it's what I like to call buckets. According to last year's Housing Inventory Report that was produced by the city's planning department, just 50% of the units built in 2016 were considered affordable. We talk about affordable in this sense. I'm talking about housing that's cheap enough for the extremely low-income family, all the way up to the middle-income family, the middle-class family, families that make $138,000 a year. That's a wide, wide range, right? So most of that new housing that's come online in recent years, if you look at some of the data, has been at market rate prices. So I'm going to ask the candidates, if we elected mayor, how would you help the city build more affordable housing that's balanced for the very core in our families, all the way up to the middle class, so that people can afford a home that fits their income level and live in San Francisco? Feel free to work your way through that. I don't think this is on. Is this on?
No.
Well, maybe it's just better if I yell. I'm honestly proud of you. How's that?
Hello? No, no.
Okay. Hello? It's a thrill. Well, yeah.
That might be a little too late. Well, I'll hold it low down. Patrick's Day to all the good day. It's been a great day being in the parade and being in the Irish community in San Francisco, which is a very large community. Affordability of housing, you know, I just heard that affordability of housing, $130,000. Housing in San Francisco is simply not affordable for the average person. It hasn't been affordable for years. I just want to give a little background. In 2004 to 2012, I did a homeless plan that housed over 11,000 people. And that homeless plan was extremely successful to the degree where our budget analysts are saying, go back and re-need that plan because it worked. We had housing in the pipeline. And then in 2012, the housing that was in the pipeline, the formerly homeless, who were literally taking off the streets and getting, then a unit was moved over to what is now called, was then called affordable. So when you find out what affordable is, you realize that somebody making $80,000, $80,000 a year cannot live here. You find out that someone making $100,000 can't later, $130,000 with a family cannot live here, which is why there are so few families in San Francisco now. So as mayor, I've always promised, and though I have to tell you, this is one topic, availability of housing and affordable housing is a topic you need to call the experts on because it isn't easy to just get up and say, I'm going to propose, you know, 30,000 new affordable housing units. There's so much more to it. I believe, well, first of all, I have plans to, to have the 5,000 units that mayor need as proposed. And that's one. But every single builder in this city, every single builder in this city that wants to build housing needs to sit down with his people and agree upon an amount that is below what they're calling affordable. I realize right now it's like 18%, sometimes just a 25%. There's a new building on Mission Street that's 50% affordable, but still, affordable isn't what San Francisco needs right now. It's below affordable. That's what we need in order to keep the teachers, the paramedics, the firefighters, the police, keep people in town and have them be able to have families too. So I am all for building much more housing, but I'm also all for a severe analysis and audit of the planning department to find out exactly what we have and what we don't have and what is in the pipeline for affordable housing and below affordable.
Thank you so much.
I couldn't tell if they would tell you.
Yeah, it's good. No worries. Thank you so much. Next, well, next we'll hear from Jane, Jane Hinn. Do you have any question yet, again?
Yeah, that's values for extremely low-income families and middle class. I'm already gone. I'll give you a shout out. This is me hiring as a community organizer 18 years ago, which is how I got my start in San Francisco local politics. So it's good to see you here. Affordable housing has been a big part of my legislative work over the last seven years on the Board of Supervisors. And I'm proud of the fact that I have negotiated and won more affordable than affordable housing than any legislator on this board over the last seven years. Now, the district I represent is currently absorbing close to 80% of all of San Francisco's residential and commercial growth. And we could have just let that growth happen without any type of intention or planning around what gets built. Now, 60% of San Franciscans qualify for affordable housing under federal HUD guidelines. So that is a big percentage of San Franciscans that we are not building for today. To build more affordable housing takes funds. And by the way, traditionally in this country, government used to be the business of building housing. In fact, between 1940 and 1980, the federal government built close to 6,000 units of subsidized low-income and middle-income housing through HUD. And then after 1980, President Reagan, under the guise of small government, decided the market should take care of housing for poor and the middle class and see where that has left us 40 years later. And the federal government since only built 1,000 units of affordable housing. And, you know, HUD's budget used to be larger than the Department of Defense. So we need to reset trend at the federal and state level, but what can we do here worldwide? One, developers who are responsible without rebuilding housing for the wide spectrum of incomes throughout San Francisco, we have to ask them to build more affordable housing. And we can do that. And I've been able to demonstrate that in projects throughout my district where we've been able to achieve as high as 40% low-income and middle-income housing, up to 150% of the average median income. Now, we often do that by raising density and height on these projects, conferring value to land. If you add an additional story or 10 stories to someone's parcel, you're actually giving that land, that property owner money, right? Because you're adding value to their land. So as we add value to land, we have to ask those developers to share that value back with the community by building more affordable and middle-income housing, parks, open space, transit improvements. Second, the city needs to give in more to affordable housing. We have the Housing Trust Fund where we're capturing tax increment. Lastly, redevelopment. We also have the $310 million Affordable Housing Bond, which is incredibly important. The last time we passed the bond was in 1996 at $100 million. So we need to make sure the Affordable Housing Bond is a regular part of our capital. It's cycled, comes out every couple of years. I'd like to see us pass a $1 billion general obligation bond similar to what Santa Clara County did. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for participating in this exercise of democracy and want to thank all the sponsors for bringing us here together. Originally, affordable housing has been something that has been one of my top priorities going back to my years on the Board of Supervisors in the late 1990s. At that time, I began to author our inclusionary zoning ordinance, which was the first time San Francisco ever mandated that a percentage of all market rate housing be below market rate. And we passed that after years of working on it to get just the sweet spot. We had for-proper developers, non-proper developers, and it passed unanimously at the board. Since then, we've built upwards of 5,000 units of below market rate housing for San Francisco. So that is a very important component. And as Erica wanted us to recognize that originally it was for 55% below and below median income, now we're all the way up to about 120% of median income because the need continues to grow. But we're going to have to be very creative looking at other ways and working not only with the state, unfortunately, the federal government is not there for us anymore, but also with our regional partners. This is not a local issue you need to San Francisco. The entire Bay Area is in need of affordable housing and we should work with our regional partners for a large generalization bond for affordable housing. I also, as Chair of the Senate Budget Committee, was able to bring back to San Francisco $500 million, which is both our affordable housing bonds combined, to expedite the construction of 3,300 affordable housing units, Mission Bank, Trans Bank, and Underpoint Shipyard. So working with the state, working with our regional partners, making sure we get as much out of our inclusionary zoning ordinance, all of those, and more, is that we need to scour for the best, best in the brightest, we have to say.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Stable affordable rent is an essential need for so many of our workers and our families and our residents. And so we need to start us off by passing around the Hasta Hopkins repeal petition. And my campaigns already collected 60 signatures, so I hope that everyone will join me in collecting signatures during this campaign cycle.
Amy, I'm going to ask that that actually be placed outside?
Oh, direct. All right. Well, other forums, I've been able to pass it around. Why not? We have to all participate.
But that's a sure.
Participate. So here's, here's what we need in San Francisco. We need a third financing mechanism right now. We do have the inclusionary and we do have federal tax credits that can pay up to 60% AMI in one development. But we need this mechanism. And we also need to demand as a city that any upzoning that we do is 50% affordable. And the only way we can do that is with this new financing mechanism so that we're getting... I like what the small sites program does right now for San Francisco. We'll give zero to low-interest loans to be able to support the financing to purchase small buildings. And so instead of getting tax credits, I like the idea of doing this, you know, zero to low-interest financing, where we support the developers in building that 50% affordable. And I think it should be strategized between 15% AMI, which currently I am 15% AMI, by the way, I am a low-income resident, all the way up to 120% AMI, which is two teachers living together, which we need to do as well. By the way, the ADU program, additional zoning unit program, is something I've been promoting since I ran for mayor in 2015. Unfortunately, it didn't get picked up. We can do it now before we become mayor. It's $200,000 a pop to do additional zoning unit in one of the 37,000 parcels that's been identified already. So that could be 5,000 units we build, a billion dollars, and it can be supporting local labor and it can be geared towards our workforce. I think the affordability should be 30% less than now.
We can probably not.
Sat in the bed.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
All right. Let's go to our second question. So our second question is, we hear of San Franciscans all the time talking about how they're moving away from San Francisco because it's just so hard to live here. Perhaps they've been out, just out, pushed out because of how expensive it is. Maybe their rent is too high. Maybe it's just not enough to find, to make a living, which then creates these wrong traffic lines, which perhaps they're living further out in the Bay Area or in the peninsula, or sometimes they relocate to Sacramento or even out-of-state even, right? So I want to know, if you're elected mayor, what policies or initiatives do you think you can help renters and owners right now? This is beyond sort of the concept of building more housing to prevent displacement. What do you think policies and initiatives that can be done right now that can help renters and owners stay in their homes and prevent the loss of existing rental housing? Let's go to that next time. So Amy will start with you.
Well, I, you know, I live in the Bay Area and I've lived in a variety of places, including Portland. And it's always felt to me and my friends that San Francisco, you've got to hustle a little bit harder to stay here, right? You know, it's a little bit harder than other places. And I felt personally, since I've been here 2007, I've been displaced twice and it's really devastating. And, you know, I felt like the city was trying to spit me out, but I decided that I'd do rings here. I went to SFC for organizational development. I had three rings here for the first time in a long time. And so I have held on with everything I have and a lot of people in this room have as well. But what we can do, number one, Hasta Hopkins repeal. Let's make sure that we can extend rent control to everyone so you don't have a landlord that can increase the rent, just because I want to. The next one, so everybody in this room, please do petition gathering for Hasta Hopkins because that's so, so important. And, oh, there's another thing on the ballot as well, which is the right to counsel. And it's so important that we pass that. So people here, some of you got signatures for that. Everybody, if they are under threat of eviction, needs that support. And we also need the level before that where it's mediation. And so I've been talking to some small property owners, and I was a small property owner with the Community Land Trust when I worked there as operations manager, and I had to actually negotiate some new guidelines with people because people were threatening other people that they would do it, but it wasn't the right situation for them. But we always cared where they landed, and that's really important too. And so with that in mind, if we can get to this place where anybody who is being evicted, you know, is a first level of mediation support for some of the, between the property owner and the tenant, and then if, if it turns out that the person who's the tenant needs additional support, then we should definitely do that. But I've talked to a lot of property owners that have said that they don't actually rent out all their units. And so we'd have to do something around vacancy taxes because supply and demand does not work when you can withhold supply. Are you with me on that?
Yes, 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 yes. The question is, how do, what initiatives and policies could you commit now to keep renters and owners in their place and protect existing rental housing?
Okay. So whereas only about 10% of San Franciscans can afford to purchase market rate housing, only about 15% of us can afford to rent market rate housing. So the need for affordable housing stock for renters is crucial. And our most valuable affordable housing stock for renters is our rent-controlled units. And that's why I've focused so much on the LS Act in recent years. My first year in Sacramento, working with many of you in the room, I was able to amend the LS Act, the only time it's ever been amended, to exempt single-room occupancies as our goal. And when we did that, we detected there were 12,000 San Francisco's most vulnerable houses close this close to eviction and becoming homeless. And when we're talking about displacement and eviction, we know that we're also talking about the possibility of homelessness and so forth. Those who have it, we have to do everything within our power to keep them in their homes. It's much more expensive for taxpayers to help someone get off the street than to stay in their own. And so that means legal assistance to keep folks who are challenged in their tendency to succeed in fighting that challenge. And additionally, of course, rental assistance, again, better spent upfront rather than the back end after people have already been evicted. The city can also invest in taking buildings and units off the speculative market. Housing used to be a place where we lived, not commodity that is being bought and sold on international speculative markets. So just a few ideas of how you can and must keep people in their homes.
So how do we keep tenants and families in place in their home today? One, I was proud to work with many of you in this room today to pass an eviction protection 2.0 in 2015 over the years. And we've tied our low-cost evictions throughout San Francisco, and we've seen a dramatic drop in these types of evictions where landlords were evicting tenants because they were repainting their bedroom walls and leaving their bicycles in common areas, or like in Chinatown, hanging their lawn behind their bedroom. And for the first time ever instituted, vacancy rent control, like owner-moving evictions, for five years when landlords do analyze, to make sure that they're truly doing an owner-moving eviction where rent increases would not matter to that owner. We need to continue to protect tenants and also to stabilize our rent-controlled buildings today. For every two units of affordable housing we build, we lose a rent-controlled unit to demolition, condo conversion, LS Act evictions and others. And so right now, we're in many ways just running in place and we have a lot more work to do to help preserve our existing rent-controlled stock. Amy had mentioned our small-site acquisition fund. I've been a huge proponent of it. Our district has allocated more than $10 million to add to this fund through developer fees and rent con... to add to this fund through developer fees at Brink Con Hill. And we purchased at least four buildings here in District 6, one on Turf, two on Yatoma, one on Folsom Street, where we were able to protect those rented residents and keep them in place so that they weren't evicted into the speculative market. We also need to pass a speculators tax again. Which we need, with many of us here in this city, we need to bring that back to make sure that we are taking the incentive out of the greed incentivized sales that we're seeing here on the city. The vast majority of evictions, by the way, target the most vulnerable residents. They target elderly, people who speak English as a second language, and individuals with disabilities. And we're no... Oh, sorry. Okay. So, we're waiting here. And I'll wrap you up. But yes, we're talking about that. Obviously, it sounds like neither of you are ready to hear. Obviously, we know what we're talking about, but the definition of housing. So, one of the microphones we get to, Muzalia, you can hear. One, we're also following the discussion on social media. We're using the hashtag #SSHousingTownhall. Please add to the discussion online. And also, as you're listening to our candidates talk about these things, if you've got a question about them, pass them up to the in's, especially if there's something there that they're talking about and you want to know more about it. Angela?
When I was president of the Board of Supervisors and the two years before, rent control had first come up, and then I co-sponsored several amendments to it. It's an area that is really very difficult to understand in the sense that, can you have a tax on future vacancies? I think that's a great idea. On behalf of the balance, of course, the property agency is a constitutional benefit detriment balance. But on the other hand, the city is not livable. There are so many other reasons why people are leaving. I had fought the Ellis Act evictions for years as discrimination trial lawyer. Believe me, I have fought them for years, and by the way, I will now. And any kind of help or exemption that can be done with the Ellis Act, I have offered and always looking for it. And everything that Supervisor Senator Lino did with the SROs was absolutely incredible because that also was a place where we were going to be putting formerly homeless. But having said that, you know, it isn't just all these rules and regulations and having people leave San Francisco. There are many reasons people are leaving San Francisco, not the least of which, the city is filthy. And that's because DPW doesn't do its job. The city is dangerous for kids. And that's because DPW, again, doesn't do its job. The city has so many poor homeless people living in the streets that is absolutely unconscionable, unconscionable in a billion-dollar city, a billion-dollar city. Our city government is $10 billion. That, yet $1 billion is $1,000 million. And we have, it's pretty astronomical, but we have $10 billion. We have to do all we can to keep people that make $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 in our city. And at the same time, we need to house our formerly homeless people and get them off the streets of our beautiful city, and then clean our streets. So, I am for any, especially commercial vacancy control taxes. I mean, why would they be allowed to keep their commercial sites vacant for six, seven, eight months when they could easily be rezoned and turned into housing? And so, I'm for any progressive program that would get more housing in the city than the city's.
Thank you, Angela. So, I want to remind you guys that, so, we're collecting these questions. So, we're going to stop collecting these questions after we move out of this three questions. I'm getting to my third question here. So, if you've got anything that you want to be read up here or you want to present a question, please try to get them in as soon as possible. So, our third question is about homelessness because I feel like we cannot talk about housing without talking about homelessness. So, last year's homeless point in time scale found that there were 7,500 homeless people in San Francisco. It's about 2% increase of the last four years. And the majority of those counted last year were unsheltered. And that means that people were living in tents, in the streets, perhaps even in their car. These are unsheltered people living on the streets. So, I'm going to go to the candidates. What is the most creative but practical solution for finding homes for the homeless and making sure that they stay home, which is a very tough thing sometimes? I'm going to start with Mark Leno. Random.
So, we realize that about 70% of those who are living on our street without shelter, without a home, were living under a roof in San Francisco before they became homeless. We recognize that we've got to do everything we can to keep folks in their homes. And that's why I would take speculators to court because they're illegally and inappropriately using the Ellis Act. It was written for landlords, not for speculators to go out and business of being a landlord. So, I would take them to court to stop those evictions. Step one, keep those in home, in their home. Just yesterday, I unveiled a program which I entitled "End Street Homelessness by 2020." That's the 35,000 people living on our streets today who should never have been there to be given you. We've got to make that a top priority. We've been talking to them day and night. We've been investing money. We've made some progress. We kept a lid on it getting much worse, but it is not acceptable. And we cannot continue to do things the way we're doing them. So, step one for ending street homelessness by 2020 would be to make use of an estimated upwards of 1,500 empty SROs in San Francisco today. So, we need to be working with building owners to find out what their resistances are, and then make arrangements with them. And there'll be a lot of savings at the Department of Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Department of Public Health, our county jail, if we find the will to take people off the streets. And then, we have a waiting list of 1,000 people everywhere who just want to get into shelters. So, we've got to expand our shelter beds, if only temporarily, while we continue to find a way to build permanent supportive housing for those folks as well.
You call Angela. Let's hear from Angela.
2004, we sat together with 60 people from the 80 each other. It was the Hotel Castle, it was Jennifer, the Coalition on Homelessness. Everybody in that room really disliked Jennifer. Six months, it was fascinating, even at the architaphysis. And so, that was extra powerful. So, we came up with a plan that works. I do not understand why the city and county of San Francisco couldn't stick with a plan that worked. And house people, and people with lack of citizenship in our units. What we house people to today, those same people are still there. It's 94% lack of citizenship. And it's very simple. Shelters are a terrible place, ladies and gentlemen. You wouldn't want anyone to go to a shelter. Shelters and other programs that are temporary are not the answer to homelessness. Permanent supportive housing is the answer. Then 48, it's the answer. It works. Let's do it again. We have the buildings in San Francisco. We've heard Supervisor Senator Lino say, we have over 1,000 SROs. That's incredible. Those are all formerly homeless people that can deal with it, that are not triple-diagnosed, that do not have other situations where they couldn't deal with living in a unit. In other words, when you pick the person off the street, within 48 hours, you decide where they go. It's a type of triage. They either go to medical, which several go to, or they go to rehab, they go to alcohol rehab, drug rehab, whatever particular place they're supposed to go, they go to that. After that, this city should never let any program be paying millions of dollars to it here. Millions of dollars, put that person that has been rehabbed back into the street. Every single one of those programs needs to be stopped because it's millions, it was over $600 million in 2004. It's millions of dollars. They need to understand, you take a person and you rehab them and pretend you're not there. You put them into housing. They're human beings. Most of them can get a job again. Some of them can go to another type of rehab. You never put them back into the streets. Thank you for your...
It's Ann.
We have to expand our rent subsidy program. It is a great program that we have here in San Francisco, and I've been a leader of making sure that we expand rent subsidies for our families and individuals. Every single year on the board of supervisors in our budget fights to keep more people in their homes so they don't get evicted or unable to pay rent and end up on our streets. We need more step-up housing. And I want to thank Central City SRO Collaborative Housing Partnership for fighting for step-up housing so that we can free existing room in our single-room occupancy hotels with supportive housing for residents that feel ready to move on to what we call step-up housing so we can free up these units for people who live on our streets today. We need more shelter beds. We just simply need more shelters to get people off the streets. They're incredibly expensive, and it's not okay to let people sleep on the streets in sleeping bags or tents. And we need more medical respite shelters. I actually took the challenge by the Coalition on Homelessness and went through the reservation system and spent a night in one of our shelters next door down the street because I wanted to understand what that experience was like. And when I stayed at the shelter, I understood that our shelters were not built for the demographic that is coming to stay in the shelter today. Shelters are built for someone like me, young, able-bodied, down on my luck, and all I need is a bed and shelter for a couple of weeks, a couple of months. But I learned at shelter that night that people are far older and far sicker than I realized. And after that stay, I fought for full-time nurses at all of our single-adult shelters, which we now have. And I fought to expand a medical respite shelter in the South Market on Mission that staffed by nurses, clinicians, and psychologists, and not just the minimum-age staff members that we put in shelters that get no training to address the population that's coming in and are also frustrated because they can't serve the people that they are there to serve. Finally, creative idea, I want to start eminent domain for vacant SRO hotels. And yes, there are instances in which we can negotiate with the owners, like with Middleley, where we're going to bring 50 units online that have been vacant, but we should be exploring this for all the other vacant units.
I have been a friend with the direct service in health and transitional housing and intentional healing communities, as well as program evaluation and development. And so, after the 2015 election, I decided to be inspired by Francis Passisi, who said, "Do what's necessary, do what's possible, and soon you'll be doing the impossible." And actually take on the encampment crisis, the shelter shortage crisis, as a manageable crisis. And I want to let everyone in here know that it is a manageable crisis right now. We have an estimated 3,100 to 35,000 people living right now in tents or sleeping bags or in RVs or vans on the street. Currently, and I've been, so I started the St. Francis Homelessness Challenge a week or two after the election, and I've been going strong with that ever since. I've been assessing what the city is doing, offering analysis and developing and piloting programs. So, the city is currently spending $30 million a year on DPW and SAPD just for encampments, just for encampments, $30 million. And we see the result, the outcome is what we see on our streets right now. If we have the ability to invest $30 million, I actually have a strategy where we can stabilize everyone who's currently living in crisis on our streets. We can do that. There's actually a plan. I would stop campaigning if I felt that, like, let's get the tech community that would pull me up $15 million, and let's redirect some of those resources right now. And I would joyfully leave this process for a period. Like, give me $35,000 a year and let me leave this. That would be a dream opportunity for me to actually help stabilize what's going on on the streets. We have something called Safe Organized Spaces and an Encampment Vulnerability Index. So, there is a plan that I have, starting May of 2017 to June, to whenever it is, we can start right now. And you know what the city is doing right now? They're not working with encampment residents and the neighbors to address this crisis. So, there's two tools, the Encampment Vulnerability Index as well as the Safe Organized Spaces Framework. For $30 million, redirect those resources and actually work with encampment residents. So, it's not just you belong, it's you belong with reasonable agreements in safe organized spaces on your pathway to housing.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the second part of our program, which is, I told you earlier when we were talking over promoting events and getting people to come, getting our candidates to engage in our voters, we asked for your questions to send them along. And we had a couple of them, so I'm excited to see if I can call on a few people. Hopefully, they let him come. Is Daphne in the room? Daphne, hi.
Hi.
Say it. Oh, this is Daphne. Go a second, can I get you up over on the side? All right, so, Daphne, you sent us a question. You are a social worker, am I right?
Yeah.
And you also live in what part of this city? Maybe this way, so that we can use my... Oh, here. Just dance together. All right, move this way, just so the crowd can see you a little bit. And also, we can wave if they can. So, Daphne, tell me, where do you live?
I'm in the Mission de la Rua area.
Okay. And tell me, how can we be lived there?
I've lived in San Francisco for 27 years, and I've been in the Mission for 25.
You told me that in your question, you've been there at the same apartment for almost half the time. It's half, 24 years, right?
Yeah, I've been there for 12 years.
And you've seen some changes?
A lot of changes in the neighborhood, but also in my direct neighborhood, in my building, which was, is six buildings, six units. We have been through three different property managers in the past two years, and now they have, they bought half the building out. They are now renovating all three units. And we've been living with construction work for the past two years. And now, they're almost there digging three units under my building. So, it's another year-plus of construction.
See, you also had a question for our candidates. Tell me your question for our candidates.
My question was specifically how the candidates would address people in the under $50,000 a year bracket and how you would go to protect people in housing so they continue to work. I lose my housing. I have to leave San Francisco after building a life here for 27 years.
Thank you for sharing your question with us. So, candidates, how, let's try to answer Daphne's question. How can we ensure, how can we build housing for folks who are making $50,000 a year or below? And make sure that Daphne has a still style of life to live. Angela, you're holding right.
Yeah, you have a club. Come on. I could do this opposite of where I am. That's exactly the population that I'm referring to, trying to stay in San Francisco and keep in San Francisco because quite frankly, you are San Francisco. And we have bought all these tech, the tech industry of this city which has become a billion-dollar city, but there was no planning. There was no permissible planning. Nobody sat down with everybody and said, okay, we're going to bring 3,000 people to this building. Where are we going to live? Where are they going to park their cars? Are they going to drive? The Lyft Uber thing, in my opinion, is one of the biggest scams ever because they come... I admit I don't take them. But having said that, they come and they do business in the city county of San Francisco. I own Little Silver Rice Hall for them. I pay business tax. I do business in the city. They come here, they do business, and they pay no city taxes at all. They're ruining our streets. They park in the middle of the street. They're arrogant. They're arrogant. They cause, they cause not just traffic, but dangerous situations. And they won't pay a penny to be a Uber driver in our city. Now, I'm not saying Uber drivers, because I understand it even makes less than the whites, which is disgraceful. Or we should demand that we, that Uber lifting chariot sit down at the table with the city county of San Francisco and agree on how they're going to do business here and take part in the infrastructure. Because having said that, that money can go to housing the people that do make $50,000, $60,000 a year. But also, there need to be coalitions. There's no such thing as coalitions in the present government. We sit down with the government, the IT, and the communities, and you have a coalition of people who are aimed at keeping the people who make $50,000 a year each, a year. Each development project needs to have agreement that there's going to be availability for that salary range.
Thank you, Angela.
I always feel like you did... I'm on you, I'm on you, Angela. Who wants to tap to that question next? Yeah, you can tap it. We have to protect tenants in place today with strong tenant protection ordinances, like eviction protection 2.0, and also like the right to counsel, which will be on the ballot for June 5. We know that close to 90% of tenants don't have any type of representation in a breach of seating of a big deal. They win the vast majority of the time. So they did it in New York City, please vote for it on June 5. I want to thank tenants together and tenants union for putting on the ballot because we absolutely need to provide the right to counsel in these types of cases. We need to both protect rent control buildings and strengthen tenant protections and rent control. Repeal cost of housing. And we need to build more affordable housing. That is a two-pronged approach to how we keep a working and middle-class house here in San Francisco. We can build and continue to build on tenant protections as we continue to. I believe we should expand rent control. That requires a change in state law. I think we should have a rolling rent control year. So as each year moves up, another year of constructed units goes on the rent control market because those are working class and middle-class units here in San Francisco. And we have to build more affordable and middle-income housing. Building housing alone will not make San Francisco more horrible. Building as much affordable and middle-income housing as possible is going to make San Francisco more horrible. And we need to increase both developer obligation in creating that type of housing and also put in more public subsidies and funding to make sure that we're both creating affordable housing and preserving rent control buildings. So I just want to dive in a little bit to this idea of the additional dwelling unit program that I'd like to see happen in San Francisco. So once again, there are 37,000 parcels that have been identified to have one or more additional units added within the existing building envelope. So what the city can do with the pool of money is say, "We go to the property owners, and let's start with, you know, small property owners and marginalized communities first. And we say, 'We identified your building to be able to have an additional dwelling unit.' If you sign here, we will take care of the financing, we will add property tax increase, we'll do the planning and construction, all of that for you if you agree to work, to rent to one of our workforce or residents or families in SFUSD for a maximum of 30% net of their income." Doesn't that sound amazing? I mean, think about that for a second. What we would do is be saying, "We're going to take care of the financing for this. So as you are paying off that loan, with the rent that's coming in, we have an expanded pool of our workforce and families and residents who are currently rent burdened, who would join in." This could be done through both CD, the mayor's office of housing, new online platform, Gollyo. Let's say you're a worker and you're paying more than 30% net of your income, or you can't live in the city, can't afford to live in the city. You could be part of this. The other part we would like about this idea is that we could focus it on 100% local hire. And so that means that people would be adding, and we'd be building the building trades with our underemployed and unemployed residents to be able to build San Francisco together. So chew on that. I know there's a lot that I just should. You guys will be mindful of the time. I want to try to get to some of the questions there, so thank you so much.
So Daphne, I'm really quite sure from your situation, if your landlord was making these improvements with the intent to so disrupt your life and your fellow neighbor's lives, you would leave. If that's the case, and I'm quite sure, if that is the case, or when that happens, and we do know that that happens, there should be a direct hotline to the mayor's office so that we can keep an eye on that and make sure the tenants who are being harassed are addressed. Getting back to that Ellis Act, which is abused by speculators who aren't landlords and don't intend, don't pretend to be landlords, as I mentioned, they should be challenged in court and stopped from using law that was not written for them and keep folks in their housing. We also, when I was in Sacramento, offered a bill that clarified in state law that teachers should be able to benefit from affordable housing that is on land deemed to be surplus by school districts throughout California. And that way, we can address a middle-income range of folks who are in need, specifically in the school district, teachers, as well as other staff. And so using a variety of opportunities, both with loan and tax credits, this new place, this building, built in, I think, 1910, houses 172 formerly homeless people. There was some general fund money, but a lot of loan and tax credits from the federal government, as well as, because it's a historic building, historic tax credits. So again, leasing together in as many ways as possible, keeping folks in their homes, like Daphne, and those who are on the street, into into homes and providing support housing.
So I'm going to call on, well, before we go, we're just going to start again. We've got about 25 minutes left in this building. I want to try to get through more questions. Would the candidates free, if I ask you, is to limit your responses to a minute? It's tough, I know. Actually, I will say, Mark, you've done a really great job. I'm going to, I'm going to, we're going to try real hard, okay? I like when we try. I'm going to call on Natalie. Natalie's in the building? Natalie asked us a question. Natalie? Natalie? No? No? Okay. Ah, hi Natalie. You asked us a question about displacement in San Francisco in African-Americans?
What'd you say about having to get American?
She didn't tell you your question. So Natalie, um...
Wait a minute.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Is it Natalia? It's Natalia. Okay, so Natalia, tell me what part of San Francisco do you live in?
I grew up in the Richmond district.
Let me in a short way. What do you think?
Oh, well, I'm obviously deeply concerned about displacement of low-income people, African-Americans, working-class people in San Francisco. Many of the people you grew up with don't live in the city anymore.
Tell me another question. What question did you write down that you had for the candidates to answer?
Well, something that seems not to be talked about a lot in this candidate's race is what candidates are prepared to do to try to stem the tide of African-American displacement in San Francisco. And I also wanted to know if candidates had any ideas for reparations for African-American tenants who lost home equity during civic redevelopment and due to other city official housing policy in the past. And specifically, I wondered if candidates were prepared to speak on what they might do to support the tenants at the Midtown Park Apartments, which is an apartment hall, which is an apartment complex in the Fillmore Western Edition, which was built as redevelopment housing for homeowners and tenants who lost their homes to civic redevelopment. The tenants now, 50 years later, are facing displacement at the hands of the city and the worst of housing and are calling for no displacement, no demolition, rent control, or home equity.
Thank you. So it's tough. There's a lot of talk there, y'all. Is your mic on?
Is it?
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
See, I'm from the area that she's talking about.
Okay, so you're saying he's from the area that he's talking about?
I'm from the Fillmore area that she's talking about.
Uh-huh.
This city has done ethnic cleansing in the Western Editions.
But I've got two questions to ask you. Well, we've got to get out of here pretty soon.
Just let me speak, just let me speak.
I'll give you 30 seconds.
Please, please.
Here we go.
And as a result, our nationality has been replaced, okay, and our population...
Come this way, so you can speak into the mic so people can hear you.
My nationality has been displaced, and as a result, our numbers are nowhere near the populations of other nationalities in the city. Now, in order to correct this problem, we need an injunction ruling to replace that 60-square block and footage that displays all the black people in the Fillmore area. This Justin Herman, who displaced our neighborhood, okay, racially profiled that neighborhood in the whole whole city and got rid of the black skin color population.
Tell me, tell me real quick what you did.
I'm Mr. Right, okay?
How long have you lived in San Francisco?
All my life.
Very good.
I don't want to be your grandma. Now, because of this displacement, and the effect it makes me so bad for me is because after you displaced all my nationality, I was doing construction, and I helped build the Fillmore City. You lied and said that the blacks that got displaced would be the first to move back in. But then you set the rents at a requirement higher than the income, than the income that the black people was making. And that's why we got a low amount of populations of blacks in the city now.
So let's get to your question. So I really want to get the candidates to answer.
You don't have to answer my question. You got to understand all that.
Really, you got to answer the candidates' question.
As a result, as a result, as a result of that displacement, all new housing that's being built, that's being set at an income requirement that's higher than the income you're given.
Do you'd like to make sure that housing is set at an income that is available for...
Income is got to be set for all incomes of people who live in the city. People with disabilities, people who are of disability, and people who have cognitive disabilities that are ill and physical and are fat, too.
But you said income.
Let me finish.
We have a lot of questions. It is 5:12. So why don't you, now, let's get these questions. Please sit down. Well, we've given you a minute, and we also need to get to somebody else's questions. We don't, actually. We don't, actually. We have to get, um, please. Okay, so the question was, how do we stop making displacement? Well, I'm sorry.
Higher African Americans in San Francisco.
Okay, the question was, the question was, how do we stop the tide of African-American displacement in the city, especially in the Fillmore area, to make sure that African-Americans are not leaving the city as much as they used to be because they were targeted and because we have things of redlining and racist policies back in the day with housing and redevelopment and people are failing. So for that reason, I'm going to...
Price six.
All right, so you're pricing out. I get it, I get it.
And so, uh, six.
Right, right, right. So we're going to start with Jamie Kin, who's going to answer that question. I'm trying to, and I have one minute to answer this question.
So I think we're working on a blueprint for having a mayor's office of race and equity within our administration, which would specifically develop a blueprint for how we, how we bring back communities that have been displaced by histories of policies that have displaced that particularly communities of colors and the African-American community out of San Francisco. It takes a lot more than housing. We have to do intentional race-based investment on small businesses in African-American communities that are viable, on job programs that target the African-American community, and also on housing as well. We have to build significantly more affordable housing. We have to consider preferences. The city of Portland actually just announced a plan where they are targeting affordable housing preference for residents that have been displaced out of the city. And that is something that we should consider here in San Francisco, too. But more than anything, we have to intentionally do investment in communities that build up economic power and, and economic power and job workforce in the communities to keep people in place here in San Francisco.
I, I, I answered your question. I just made a double talk.
I'm going to try to answer your question. Hold on. Okay, okay. I just need you.
Last two years, I've been a civil rights trial lawyer. Representative, over 80% of my clients are African-American. And I totally understand that the city and county of San Francisco has shut the African-American out of our city. Shut it, shut that whole community out of our city. Let me just say, the Midtown, what gave you the Midtown is, that was a promise. It was a written promise, and they ought to go to court right now to say so. The best thing you can do is to fight back and not sit down and let it happen. And it's a written promise, okay? That's it. When I began for mayor, Willie Brown was in the race, and I kept saying, "Willie, that Third Street rail is going to hunt hunters point out of town." You guys know that you're building all of this property up on the hill there, and this Third Street corridor is going to meet something that absolutely runs the African-Americans out of town, and it did. So all these things were foreseeable. And all I can say is that you have to go about the business of enforcing the MBE, LBE that I have sponsored and I have voted. 16% of every job in this city that is given out by this city is supposed to go to African-Americans and other minorities and women, and it's only 4%. So those who don't know this meeting is plain, why then I have voted out.
We see the exodus of our African-American population in this city, I know for the past 30 years or more. And that is a tragic occurrence. We should learn from our mistakes because we're seeing it happen now to our Latino community as well. We're seeing it also happen with HIV-positive gay men and other ethnicities with HIV. Pressures are on many communities. One way that we can address this, given that price containment for housing is as challenging as it is, is when we are made to be the ones to benefit new business sectors or for market rate development, we have to extract better benefits for our communities, and they need to be enforceable benefits for our communities. We need to add new local hiring. So now the central summer plan is going to be 46,000 new jobs. Let's make sure we're not all of you from out of town. We should hire locally, and we can do that. Don't tell me there are not under and unemployed San Franciscoans. I know many of these tech positions require great expertise, they're going to do searches throughout the world. Half of those jobs are for sales. We can hire locally. We need to train, and we need to make sure that these companies are focused on local hiring. And that will raise the rates of San Franciscoans to better meet the cost of housing.
Thank you. Economic justice and reparations for the African-American community has been part of my consciousness since I did a research project back in 2008 around the neighborhood that I moved into and, and learned about the redlining and learned about the horrific institutionalized racism that wiped out the community. So just specifically, it'd be interesting to do a universal basic income approach that was focused on SFUSD families that were African-American families that were rent burdened or started somewhere in that way. In terms of Midtown, yes, reparations are necessary. Unfortunately, there hasn't been a, like, a sit-down at the table and have Midtown residents be a part of that process. And that's what really needs to happen because there are six buildings there. And I was just talking with a group of Midtown residents the other night, and I was asking, "Well, how much will it cost to repair them, like, if all of you, can they all be rehabilitated?" And this, this cost of $10 million to put out there. And so because the city made so many missteps about this, it's important to work together with the residents to figure out what direction they want to go. And there might be the opportunity to work with the residents if it was low-income working families, African-American families that could come in to those two redevelopments. There's lots of opportunities for discussion. Thank you. All right, so I'll move on to the next one. Georgia, Georgia here? Georgia? You are? Hi, Georgia. Thank you for coming. Tell me a little bit about you. What's your name?
My name's Georgia, and I live in Noe Valley, I'm a homeowner, I've been here since 1979. I'm a resident of a, uh, contract tenant.
All right, good.
Lucky enough to come in time when I could still buy a house.
The mic is on. I didn't tell you to talk louder than most people. How about me sharing?
My whole...
Can you hear me now? Is that good?
Yeah, hi, my name's Georgia. I live in Noe Valley, District 8. I've been here since 1979. I'm a homeowner, and, but I'm a homeowner for a while, I can still buy a house and a boiler and a printer.
So your, your question here is actually about SB 827, correct? You want to read it? Go for it. The next mayor will be in charge of the planning department and the commission. What do you hope they accomplish, and what is your view of SB 827 and its impact on San Francisco housing? Great question. Amy, come up to the mic. So currently, there's already 45,000 units that are entitled and ready to be for the city. So one of the things I actually learned from Christine Johnson, who's a writer there, was when she lived on the planning commission, she found that there were a certain number of projects...
of projects that their entitlement had expired, and so we have leverage there as a city. We have hundreds of, you know, expired entitled projects. That's where we can also talk about them and then do it again, because we could say that this threat of we either, you know, expire their entitlement, you use it, maybe there's an opportunity to say up the percentage of inclusionary and we'll help you with financing for that. So, we do have some leverage in that regard. Uh, we need to streamline the process, is what I keep hearing. We need to build a local workforce for construction, because we actually do have a construction shortage, and so we have so many underemployed and unemployed people in the city. That's probably, especially with what we're talking about, the central summer plan, we have the ability to invest in city build, and the neighborhood design, and CCSF programming, so that we can actually build that workforce to build these housing units, which is really important. And SB eight twenty-seven, it's wrong for the city, so I think we're all agreed on that. I could say more about it, but we do need to talk about how the central summer plan's gonna be balanced out for the city. If we have forty-six thousand new jobs, we need to figure out how to do something differently in the city. Thank you.
Margaret, take it again.
This is a question that gets passed in every one of our forms. It's a big issue in San Francisco right now, and it's a big debate issue across the state because it would impact all of California. So, very basic concerns about, number one, is the risk of displacement, and because there will be value with the result of all of this upzoning along transit corridors, we know that there will be displacement, because Los Angeles has already passed similar laws to this, and we've already seen what has happened. So, moves to fight along with the people, like Western Center on Long Avenue, our proposal to bill the rest amended, and one of the amendments they would like is to make sure there is no demolition of any residential units along these transit corridors. Whether that amendment will be taken is unknown. Additionally, are we capturing the additional value for the public good? And so, that would require, uh, some exclusionary, low-market rate mandate. So, again, if the owner, buyer, the developer is going to get that benefit as a result of the upzoning, there must be a public benefit for it.
Yes.
It's one-size-fits-all planning, which is a major problem. I don't know if we can fix that with amendment.
Yeah. First of all, thank you so much for this question, because it's funny, this, this city build has a ball going with this campaign. When, when the campaign first started, it came out, and now it's being amended. Let me just say, there are two or three or four major problems, big problems, with what I believe this, uh, this law did. Number one, the city and County of San Francisco should never feel away zoning rights or any other kind of rights being stayed. We certainly feel away anything that we have that is powerful and helps our citizens. So, that's number one. Number two, the density is fairly mind-boggling. I mean, if you take Geary Street, you can only pick up ten-story buildings all the way down Geary Street and not have the infrastructure that goes with it, not have the proper transit lines that go with it, not have, um, not have, not have who we are as San Francisco. That's not who we are. We've never had high-rise corridors in this city, and we shouldn't be starting now. There are always, there are many ways to solve the availability and affordability of housing in San Francisco. So, I'm going to that particular goal.
Thank you. I did enter the Midtown question. No displacement, no demolition, and I'm a hundred percent committed to working with residents so we can keep that community in place in Midtown community. Planning Department and SB eight twenty-seven, no one has built more housing, not just affordable housing, but even market-grade housing than I have, and I've consistently done that by building in more height and more density in order to pay for affordable housing, parks, school, and transit infrastructure. My issue is SB eight twenty-seven, it's not its intention. Um, I believe in more density around transit corridor, but if you convert, if you're more likely to land, you have to ask developers to share that value back with the community by, again, building more affordable housing, more transit infrastructure, and more services that neighborhoods need in order to absorb all that growth. Being against SB eight twenty-seven does not mean that you're against building on the west side. I absolutely support density on the west side, but I wanna do it with a process, locally, with a plan here from the community, and go through a mission process. And I have stood up to my residents. Every time I raised height, residents have come out to oppose that, and we work with the residents, we work with the developers to come up with a plan that works for all of us. It takes leadership. You can do that with the planning department, you can raise density, build more housing throughout San Francisco. We don't do it again with a one-size-fits-all policy that, again, also disincentivizes our region from investing in public transit, because they don't wanna build the housing. Thank you, Jay. Is Jackie here? Jackie, welcome.
I'm open.
Sorry. Jackie, I'm over here. I'm gonna, I want you to ask your question. Quick, tell me, Jackie, what's your name?
Jacqueline.
Jacqueline. Tell me what part of San Francisco you live in.
I live in the Mission.
Um, tell me, what, uh, what is your question?
Yeah, so my question is, and I have a lot of questions, I wanna see how I combine it.
Transit law.
Okay. Um, essentially, again, I grew up in the Mission, and I work in the Mission, I work at the Women's Building, and it is nobody's here what it used to be when I was there as a young girl. So, my question to you is, how are you gonna support the working spot? And more importantly, how are you gonna support acquiring land and working with the community? And essentially, how are you gonna support and build one-hundred percent affordable housing? Because I have to tell you, I mean, I work at the Women's Building, I work with people who have very low incomes, and even then, it's really hard to get into these market-grade housings, and it's, you know, I wanna know if you're gonna work with the people who are there and have been there for a while. And, um, and work also with community groups, like Puff Sixteen, or people that are really working with the community to make sure that the community gets what they want.
Right. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Amy. I've been working with the San Francisco Summer Plan for the last two and a half years with people who are living in encampments, and many of them are, they're disproportionately people of color, right? And so, there are a lot of people that I've worked with that I've focused in the Mission and Trail Hill and Mission Bay area, and so there are a lot of people there that need that support right now. So, I'm focusing on, uh, people who don't have access to a toilet or secure sleeping shelter, and trying to stabilize that. The next thing that we really need to focus on is that, you know, after the twenty-eleven financial collapse, what ended up happening was that developers and property owners and banks ended up making out like payments, and, you know, in our country and in our city. And so, we need to really focus on not creating a tech displacement three-point-oh with this central summer plan that has the forty-six thousand jobs, but doesn't have the housing. Like I mentioned, I really want to create this financing mechanism so that we can say in any upzoning, we do fifty percent affordable. That stratified from a very low income, which we do right now, so I'll remember, you know, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars, all the way up to two teachers who are, you know, need to be able to live together, and they make about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, but fifty percent stratified across that whole map is the focus that I'm trying to do. The other thing is that if we're doing this central summer plan, that means that it's gonna be about ten years before these things really get built, and the focus should be on investing in CCSF and SF State and SFUSD, so that we can look for those jobs to be able to go into, build that skill set to be able to be able to have those jobs, right?
Thank you, Amy. All right, so we've got a few more minutes, and we want to squeeze in all our candidates here. So, heart, take it.
And one first step, if we're going to be addressing the need for one-hundred percent affordable housing, keep in mind, that's what this building is, and we can talk to folks who do it on a regular basis, Tenderly Neighborhood Development Corporation, is among those who do a great job, building one-hundred percent affordable. The cost of land is such a significant component of the cost of building housing. So, the city must identify revenue source so that we can acquire as much property and take property off the speculative market, so we can then be working with communities to know exactly what that community is in need of. Now, for example, the proposed volume at Sixteenth and Mission, not appropriate for that neighborhood, because that is where we have seen the lower availability and replacement of the community. For all the minority people from one neighborhood, that's what we're not learning from the mistakes of the past. So, acquire the land, work with the community, and set our goals, not to be able to build a one-hundred percent affordable in every situation, but those are the steps we need to take to get on that path.
Thank you.
You're the former mayor.
Yeah, again, this is, this is, uh, another, this is another area, basically, is the same answers, and I'm gonna give an example of Sixteenth and Mission Street. There is a building there that's actually called Homestir. There's a projected building, a project that's supposed to be done there. Everywhere I go in this campaign, everybody wants affordable housing. This is in an area that's got forty-seven percent, uh, front, forty-seven percent. I am the author of the original sanctuary law. I understand a little more people because of the sanctuary law. I accept that responsibility, however, they are human beings, and they still need housing, and I understand where we have done that beautifully since the original sanctuary law was written. But having said this, there's three hundred and eighteen units, and on Mission Street was fought by just about everybody, fought, and it's over fifty percent affordable housing, and yet it was fought. So, I mean, people have to sit down at the same table and discuss these issues and see what's best for the city. I mean, it literally is, if I, a case-by-case analysis, this is impossible to answer him.
I'm trying to get to many questions, because you all have very many questions. Thank you.
In response to the community question, I negotiate land use deals almost every single week, and for me, the projects like the Giants Park lot all the way to ten-six-six Market down the street, I've always had community members in the room negotiating with me, whether it's the South Market Community Action Network, the Central City S-Road Club, and Market Streets to the Massacre. I've always made sure that communities are part of the deals that we negotiate, because they live in our neighborhoods. How do we build more one-hundred percent affordable housing? Number one, we need a citywide IEMD, infrastructure-enhanced financing district. We have about, uh, twenty thousand units of housing that are already entitled at Shipyard and Treasure Island today that reach up to one-hundred percent.
Better than I'm the cleanup. Better than I'm the cleanup. After the cleanup. Your rate of evictions in San Francisco is the highest in the country, and it's the highest rate. You are not. I am the victim.
She knows. So, I want me to talk with you about your displacement.
You are the first person who didn't return phone calls to the Jewish Family Service that didn't care of me and my eviction. All I have to supervise is that we could not, if we do not contact you back, I apologize. That absolutely is not acceptable for us not to call you back.
There's a wide range of affordability, Mr. Ray, from zero to a hundred percent of average median income. Some housing is gonna be available to those that have zero percent A line, all the way to middle-class families that only have one-hundred and fifty percent.
I, I love my job. I love my job. I love the streets, uh, City and County. I fight every single day, and I, and I start my family's money.
Now, now, we need to build infrastructure if we're gonna build housing. That is my answer to the question as best as I could. Please.
Uh, I think this is what you gave. I'll, I'll, oh, they culminated with Mr. Ray's office hours last week, and I'll have office hours every first Friday on your welcome to the conference, and I'll be personally every first Friday at one thirty at the hall.
Thank you for the conversation, and we've got lots of questions to issue, to have made at five-thirty, a lot of rest. I'll be here for the rest of the show. Thank you so much for coming. I want to remind you that the last day to register to vote is May twenty-first, so please go and register to vote. Our candidates will be available out here if you've got questions. I will be available after you have questions, and we've got a conversation with you. Thank you so much. If you're interested in more events, and it's kind of cheap, and, um, this time of the, I can, uh, see you, Josh. Thank you so much.